We appreciate you all coming. I think this is our superintendent's favorite time of the meeting, and so I'm going to turn it over to her for her superintendent's board.
As I was saying earlier, I meet with students at each high school once a month. It's our Student Advisory Council, and I tell everybody there's nothing more fun about my job than to sit and talk to students and let them tell us how to fix our schools. And that's, and let me tell you, they don't mind giving me their opinion. So here's how this is gonna work. We're going to recognize Mr. Hilgert first from Citrus High School. He will call the Citrus High School students up. Mr. Meloshia will call the Christopher High School students up, and Mr. Davis will call up the Lecanto High School. And as each school is completed, Mr. Gangner will take your picture, then if that group will go out into the hallway, then he will take one group shot of all students, okay? All right, Mr. Hilgert.
Good afternoon. First student, Austin Edwards.
You don't let the girls go first, guys.
We gotta get the door. Good evening, everyone. Crystal River High School students in no particular order. Zoe Longo. Finn Olson. Ethan Kennedy. We have quite a few students that couldn't make it this evening. They had prior obligations. Am I missing anyone? Stragglers? No, thank you. Oh, so, oh, stragglers, alright, okay. This is India, right? Correct? India Langland.
Amanda Rasmann. Jordan Tuna, I don't see Jordan. Grant Shoemaker. And Patrick Englerth. Several who couldn't be here with prior commitments.
I was gonna say, I don't think it was really short.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, sorry.
I was disappointed it wasn't Susie, though, that did that. Make a note of that if you might.
All right, good afternoon. I would like to request the board's approval of the instructional support recommendations.
If you'd just give us a minute, and then, board members, when you're ready, if someone would make a motion.
I'll make a motion to discuss the support recommendations.
Count second.
A motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the instructional support Mr. Bishop, I see that there's, you know, it's this time of the year, there's quite a few people starting to make decisions and retiring. How many positions do we have open right now?
We currently have forty-five instructional positions open and fourteen support positions. In years past, we just didn't give you some feedback on that. In years past, we waited till the end of school year to post those positions. However, in discussions with Ms. Wayne, we've actually expanded our recruiting efforts, rather than just going to two different schools. We're pretty much traveling the state of Florida trying to recruit the best out to come to Citrus County to serve our students. And so in order to do that, we had to post positions much earlier than what we only have. That's why we have so many posts.
I really appreciate that. Thank you very much for going in and teaching, and I just appreciate the extra effort. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm still convinced that if we had a dating service, we'd be able to continue to attract more.
Absolutely.
I think so, because, you know, it does. It's part of our master plan. Board members, is there any other questions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
The next agenda item I have is to request the board's approval of the transportation staff for summer employment as needed for E S Y and extra duty.
I move to approve transportation staff for summer employment as needed for E S Y and extra duty.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve transportation staff for summer employment as needed for E S Y and extra duty. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
I'd also like to request the board's approval of the 2015-2016 staffing plans.
And we can just entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve 2015-2016 staffing plans.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the 2015-2016 staffing plans. Any questions?
I have a question on elementary schools, certified school counselors. I noticed that the recommendation, four hundred fifty approved, eleven hundred, is still just one counselor. Why is that?
That has been the corresponding number of counselors for some time. That's really not even change.
I know.
But certainly, if that's the will of the board, to go back and revisit that, as we move forward, we can definitely have those conversations.
What, what school has the most students? Elementary school? What's that number?
I don't know. I was taking the speaking with Ms. Wayne today. I believe this is a Lecanto primary school.
Between Lecanto, Pleasant Grove, and Central Ridge are kinda right there, about seven fifty, seven sixty.
Who says that there's a heavy load of seven hundred fifty students for the first year? Particularly now, with so much education earlier to mention. So I would like to revisit that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just wanted to ask the superintendent, or just to verify, because when we workshop this, my concern that I just brought up was the technology, master planning for our schools and the district, and I know you and I had had some conversation on that, and while I know we're adopting the staffing plan for our schools, I just wanted to just maybe ask you about it again.
I met with Dr. Gaddison. We're in the process of bringing principals together and talking about the way to use technology, staff members, and a few other ways, because every school seems to do a little bit differently. So we're gonna try to, through HR and Dr. Gaddison's department, have his man as a principal.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you for that idea, you know, looking at the way to lead personnel. Everybody seems that if you, the more you know, the more you get to do, and I'm looking for that balance. I really appreciate the fact that you're doing the best that. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, I'm sorry, can I make sure every single five last? Okay. Motion carries five zero. I just didn't wanna give somebody an opportunity.
The next item I'd like to bring forward is to request the board's approval of the new rates for the Criminal Justice Academy instructors at W T C.
I move to approve pay rates for Criminal Justice Academy instructors at Withlacoochee Technical College.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the new rates for the Criminal Justice Academy instructors at Withlacoochee Technical College. Any questions?
Balfour, not Bryant.
Oh, I'm sorry. A motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve new rates for the Criminal Justice Academy instructors at Withlacoochee Technical College. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Bryant.
I'd like to request the board's approval of the agreement between the Citrus County School Board and S S Solutions LLC.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the Citrus County School Board and S S Solutions LLC.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the agreement between Citrus County School Board and S S Solutions LLC. Any questions?
Yeah, I just, very quickly summarize what S S.
Hold on one second or so.
I'd like to also make an addendum to approve the first addendum to...
I made some modifications to it, so there's an addendum to contract also. It's all good.
So approve with the addendum.
Correct. Approve the agreement and add the first addendum.
And first addendum. Okay, I'd like to restate, modify my motion to approve the agreement between Citrus County School Board and S S Solutions LLC and the first addendum as noted.
Second.
Okay, and I'm just gonna restate it. I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the agreement between Citrus County School Board and S S Solutions Incorporated, including the first addendum.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I don't think I've seen the addendum either.
I apologize.
It's front and back, so if you go to the third page, number three page on the agreement, it turns out it's all back.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was in the agreement, but because it's an addendum, we have to mention that, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Really, what we did was that we added a...
Yes, I'm sorry, I did see that. Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Bishop, just asking you to just briefly summarize what S S Solutions does, why we...
Yes, ma'am. S S Solutions is an employment agency that would afford us a safety net, if you will. You know, you're in here in Citrus County, where people are retiring, people moving on. A lot of people, some people who are retiring have very specialized skill sets and the knowledge base that we may need to fall back on in the event we can't find someone qualified for the position. So having said that, if someone was no longer working in our school district due to retirement, we could seek out the support of S S Solutions and see if they have someone who can, if they have someone on staff that can meet the needs of the district at that time.
This can't be easy.
Absolutely. While it's, while we will always look to try to find the best qualified person to apply for our positions, interview for our positions, and get the positions, in some cases, that may not be a possibility at the time. So this just provides us a safety net should that situation arise.
But could these persons just try from our district?
Absolutely.
That we hire them?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
At this time, I'd like to request the board's approval of the performance pay salary schedule for school administrators.
I move to approve the performance pay salary schedule for school administrators.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the performance pay salary schedule for school administrators. Any questions, comments? And with that, only because it's gonna be required, and we've got some work still to do, I'm gonna go ahead and call the vote, and I'll be voting, but I still want us to do some more work on it, and I know you are.
Me too.
And that has nothing to do with you. I know that we're just trying to keep us in compliance, so thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
At this time, I'd like to request the board's approval to name Gloria Bishop Director of Withlacoochee Technical College effective May twenty-six, two thousand fifteen.
I move to approve the addition of Gloria Bishop as Director of Withlacoochee Technical College effective May twenty-six, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve Gloria Bishop as Director of Withlacoochee Technical College effective May twenty-six, two thousand fifteen. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Congratulations, Ms. Bishop, and we thank you for your service.
At this time, I'd like to pass the board's, request the board's approval to name Tammy Wilson, Director of Finance.
I move to approve Tammy Wilson, Director of Finance.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve Director of Finance, Tammy Wilson. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Ms. Wilson, are you there? And, keep going, yes, sir.
And at this time, I'd like to ask, request approval to name Christina Touchin as Assistant Principal of Floral City Elementary School.
I move to approve Christina Touchin as Assistant Principal of Floral City Elementary School.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve Assistant Principal of Floral City Elementary School, Ms. Christina Touchin. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. And, and, I'm sorry, Ms. Hemel's going to say something.
Yes, ma'am, I know you all can read items nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, and fourteen. We pulled them from the agenda. We were doing interviews with Mr. Mullins' team. They were doing interviews last night up to about five o'clock, and we were in the process today of still making some final decisions, and we didn't wanna hurry and get them to the board, because staff members have to be notified, and, you know, that process that happens. So we will start making announcements this week, so as we do that, and that's why we've requested a special board meeting for next week, just to get them all approved so we can...
Thank you very much.
And I just wanna congratulate Ms. Christina Touchin on becoming the new Assistant Principal of Floral City Elementary, and we're excited to have her. And, board members, as Ms. Hemel said, we will be having a special board meeting a week from today at nine a.m. in the morning, and I believe we just have the, on the agenda, just those items that were pulled. I tried to get it a week later with Mr. Dodd, but, you know...
I promised him more than...
You go right ahead. Thank you.
I'd like to request board approval for the 2015-2016 agreement between the School Board of Citrus County and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office for the School Resource Officer Program. I just need to modify this request to reflect in Article One, a correction to the date. It would be from July first of 2015 to June thirtieth of 2016.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, just a few, what was the, the date, from July first fifteen to July first sixteen to June thirtieth? Okay, thank you.
Sixteen, yes.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Dodd.
I make a motion to approve the 2015-2016 agreement between the School Board of Citrus County and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office for the School Resource Officer Program with the correction as mentioned.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the 2015-2016 agreement between, I'm sorry? Yeah.
As mentioned.
As mentioned, and I was gonna name it. Approve the 2015-2016 agreement between the School Board of Citrus County and the Citrus County Sheriff's Office for the School Resource Officer Program with the corrective date of July first, two thousand fifteen through June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
Correction, W T I, not W T C.
And with the correction of W T I being W T C. Thank you, Ms. Powers. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. And as always, we value greatly the S R O program in our schools, so thank you. Mr. Blocker?
Just to dovetail, item four was also a close decision, as we're gonna do some more research and do diligence on that issue, so...
Thank you, Mr. Blocker.
The budget update, not really much to report to you. As you know, the legislature kind of convened early without doing the only thing they have to do is to pass the budget, so...
Taking our ball and going home.
Yeah. So they've actually said they're gonna be back in session June first, hopefully they end no later than June twentieth. I plan on coming back to you with additional budget workshop on June twenty-third, so that's gonna be very, very hard if they don't have anything for me to come back and report to you, because I don't know what type of budget we're gonna have to talk about. We can talk in generalities, like we've done forecasting and kind of procrastination as to what we think the budget may be, but we're kind of, we're kind of being held hostage right now as to the legislature and their work or lack thereof to complete the budget. So we're hoping they get it done by June twentieth, that's what they say they have to have it done by, no later than, or if it rolls into July, I think that's territory that I don't know that any of us have been through, as to what would happen with the budget. If it continues the current thing, current funding now, and then maybe wait until the addendum comes out, and it's very hard, because I know we wanna make a lot of decisions and maybe add or do some other things, we really don't know what we got to be able to make those decisions, so it's really kind of hampering us in making those decisions. So that's really altering the board. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Blocker. And while I do joke about the House taking their ball and going home, I'm not all that disappointed that there was some educational legislation that didn't pass.
Can I just mention one more?
Yes, sir.
Just, you all know that we initially approved the contract with Microschools, they've been looking for a location. I believe we've kind of come to some resolution, or that we're going to take that vacant wing, basically, you know, as long as you approve it, at Renaissance, and let them house their school at that vacant wing at Renaissance, who have been negotiating with them to do that, and Mr. Bradshaw's already kind of prepared a draft of the lease, kind of looking at it with them. I think that's gonna be a good opportunity for all of us involved, so...
Ms. Blocker, would there be compensation to the district for that?
Absolutely. Sure. Kind of in line with how we did the compensation from SERMI. So we're working on that. I wanted to let you know that we're working on that, because it is important to us, I know it's important to y'all, to bring that school online to serve a need that we're looking for. They're having some difficulties finding space. We sought this opportunity so this could, you know, work out for both of us.
So they were not able to gain the space there at the Duke facility?
No, sir.
That didn't work out.
Meadowcrest didn't either. I know that was another one like this.
This, this actually works out.
This works out great.
Yeah. So I just wanted, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that to you, because I'm hoping to bring a lease to you at the next board meeting in June.
Does that mean when somebody actually utilizing fifty percent of that building?
Right.
It's not gonna...
It won't impact them at all. There's a clear delineation, they have a side entrance, a parking lot, it just works out perfectly, so...
They won't cross paths in the cafeteria?
Not at all. No, they won't use the cafeteria at all.
Because they just come and go.
It, it actually will work out just perfect, so I actually spoke to the principal today, along with her executive operations, an individual from California. We walked the halls, we went through, we talked about some terms.
They'll hope their own individuals do that, pointing and everything.
That's a great idea. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Blocker. And if I recall, the number of students that that school was initially planned for, that we're getting now back, in a positive way, back to that number, because SERMI using the one side, Microschool using the other, so that's excellent. Excellent. Curriculum update.
Good afternoon, members of the School Board Superintendent Mrs. Hemel, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mullins, and School Board Attorney Mr. Bradshaw. As you know, high school requirements for graduation have been an ongoing topic since Senate Bill Four, and legislation keeps coming out and changing and editing, and so there's been more demand on guidance counselors and school administrators and leadership teams. So we thought that it would be a good opportunity to provide you with an update from the actual school leaders. The principals are here to talk to you about the processes that they have in place in order to be able to ensure and track students for graduation. Over the years, we've been actually very proactive in a lot of our work in the district in regards to meeting all the needs of students and providing them with options. You know about Penn Foster, now we know it as Ed Options. We know about Plato, and a variety of students that don't necessarily meet that traditional classroom and having other options. We've just seen these options expand, and I think that the principals will provide you with a good overview of what their staff does in order to be able to meet with students individually about their plans for graduation. So I'm gonna introduce, Mr. Hilgert will be first. He'll be basically providing information that is related to Citrus High School, then Dr. Connors for Crystal River High School, and then Mr. Jeff Davis will be providing information for Lecanto High School. And then, to finish up, Regina Allegrada will give you a district's perspective in regards to our students and high school level. So I'll introduce Mr. Hilgert.
Thank you, Mr. Blocker. And, and just so that everyone's looking at our time schedule, I've got a five thirty that I just had looked at, and so, Mr. Blocker, I apologize. Do you, would it help, then, to just pause for a second, so that we don't try to get started and then...
That'd be fine.
Just so that, I just didn't wanna have to do that for to you, so... So, board members, what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna recess our regular board meeting at the, at this time, and we're just gonna hold on for about a minute, and I'm gonna open up then the public hearing in just one minute. So, Mr. Hilgert, I'm sorry, you were passing things out and may not have been able to hear. We, we've got a five thirty time certain, and so we're just gonna pause for a second and do that, so, sorry, sir.
No, it's all right.
Okay, looks close enough. So I'm gonna open the, the public hearing at five thirty, and we are here to adopt four policies, and I will turn it over to Mr. Dixon. And, Mr. Dixon, congratulations again on Caroline being honored.
I appreciate that. I have only two policies tonight, and then the reason...
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you, sir.
The first one is a new policy number two point two two one, public participation at school board meetings, and this matter was discussed by a policy informs committee on June nineteenth, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Bradshaw, can I go after this policy?
Yeah, we did a workshop on this, and, board members, I would just remind us that at this time, our options would be then to table it or to pass or not pass. We cannot amend it at this time, so we can answer, they can answer any questions that we may have. But before we do that, I'm gonna just open it up for the public. If they have any comments, to please come forward on approval of adoption of the new policy two point two two one, public participation at school board meetings. Anyone wishing to come forward on the new policy two point two two one, public participation at school board meetings? Last call. Board members, I'm gonna turn it over to you in case you have something here, or if you'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of new policy two point two two one, public participation at school board meetings.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve adoption of the
new policy two point two two one, public participation at school board meetings. Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The next policy is policy 5.09, requirements for original entry. This is basically the requirements for enrollment. It's a request to approve policy 5.099, policy revised section I, A, removed 21 years of age and replaced with 22 years of age, and I B, removed Department of Children and Family Services and replaced it with the current title of Department of Health. This matter was presented at the February 24th School Board Workshop. Glad to answer any questions.
I'm going to go first ask for public input. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak on the approval to revise policy 5.09, requirements for original entry? Anyone wishing to come forward to speak on the approval on the, sorry, the revisions to policy 5.09, requirements for original entry? Last call. Board members, I'll turn it over to you if you have any questions, comments, or for a motion.
Make the motion that we approve the revision of policy 5.09, requirements for original entry.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Bryant to approve the revisions of policy 5.09, requirements for original entry. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
And the final item is that your readoption of the current attendance boundaries, and I've also included a copy of your annual year-end report, which kind of dovetails into some of the things that Mr. Burkhaw was referring to with regards to our enrollment and how we're planning, moving forward with the different projects. We don't see a need to rezone this school year, but I'll just draw your attention to page five, which basically gives you these snapshots of where we are with enrollment compared year over year. We're basically absolutely flat. We have, in high schools, we were up 18 students, in middle schools, we were down 18 students, and in elementary school, we were down two students. So for the year, we were down two students, which is a lot better than we've been for the last four years because we've been going down. So now, I think we hit the bottom or go in the other direction. The recommendation is to readopt the current attendance boundaries for 2015-16 to monitor the growth in the elementary age group. Waste water treatment plant relocation is underway. It should be completed actually this week for City Elementary, and we'll be talking about an easement for that later. And then the cafeteria expansion, which is basically the next step in increasing core capacities, and if you could do something with that school would be the next step if there's funding available to go ahead and move that into one of the years in the work plan if there's funding available. Readopt the current attendance boundaries for the middle schools and continue to monitor those patterns. MGT had suggested that we align those with the high schools, even though we have four middle schools and three high schools, but to try to keep those aligned so that students progress to the next high school and get that out of kilter. But we look at that every year, and then to readopt the current attendance boundaries for the high schools. And I've also included in here a copy of your utilization rates for all the different schools, and I pulled it for this Monday. We do this report every Monday, and Crystal River High School actually is now at 94%. So that's telling me that we're getting a lot of good use out of the renovation that was done at that facility. We've got, you know, the schools are pretty evenly distributed, the students are pretty evenly distributed at the schools. As far as the elementary schools, which is the one that would be rezoned at the next level if we need to do that, will be this year, possibly in the next couple of years. Pleasant Grove Elementary is at 100% capacity. So that's where you would get your students from Floral City, mainly from Pleasant Grove and from Inverness Primary. Inverness Primary would be potentially downsized, kind of like we could get at Crystal River Primary because of the property and the fact that you can't, it's kind of outgrown its site there. You would have MGT come in and look at the functionality of that facility and see whether or not it should be downsized, and then you renovate, continue to renovate Floral City, and then relocate students from both IPS and Pleasant Grove down to Floral City and kind of equalize those students. Up in the north, Central Ridge part of the county, that's the other areas where you have, Central Ridge is at 96%, Forest Ridge is at 97%. So you've got those two schools that are getting close to capacity, so you have to continue to monitor that area, and that, of course, will eventually be relieved by your new school in Forest Ridge Six, for the war. But, you know, like Mr. Mullin said, you have to look at it district-wide. You can't look at one school, you have to, you'll have to rezone. And what MGT could do for you is not only look at your education suite and how well your facilities meet the needs for current technology and so forth, but also kind of give you an idea of what to do first and what order to meet the future needs that we're going to have.
And it's what Kennedy was referring to earlier, that the lack we have now that's going to change, what happens to it.
Yes.
What we're going to have to do.
And, and that's where I think what's interesting is you look in this study is, and I know, you know, we're looking at ups and downs, but at the same time, the percentage rates and capacity, the Central Ridge or what we commonly refer to as the Central Ridge area, not Central Ridge Elementary, or where we have developments, you know, Hernando's Elementary, it shows that it's up. You know, Central Ridge is, is up, as that's been the case. Rock Crusher's up, which also has a feeding to it. And Citrus Springs, it's flat, but it's actually, percentage-wise, it's, it's nearing capacity as well. And then you go back to the question, is Forest Inverness Primary, well, it's a little misconception because it's not designed for the number of students that we even have in there now, so that's not a, a fair representation of really what that, that number should be. It probably should be a lower fish number.
Right, that, that school will hold conceivably 784 students, so that's a pretty good sized school for that small footprint.
But it was designed, I believe, for substantially less initially. And I would remind for anyone interested that the, there are many classrooms that you have to walk through another classroom just to get in there, and then that classroom has no windows. So it just was not designed for, for the way we're utilizing it. So when the state says it, or others in the community say it's capable of having over 700 students, it was never designed for that purpose. So that's why I think Mr. Dodd's comment too of really Floral City, it is a, is a little bit of a key for us in, in adjusting, I think, some of those trends that we're seeing right now.
We've been planning for that for over a decade. I mean, we purchased that land for that purpose, you know, 12 years ago. There was a master plan that was done. We're slowly proceeding with that, you know, and now, you know, MGT could definitely help me look at the situation at IPS and determine, you know, what to do next. I think the sewer plant is definitely the first step. Once that's done, then everything else becomes possible because you won't have that sewer plant in the middle of campus, and it's got plenty of guaranteed capacity. So, you know, we've been following that plan from day one, and if you choose to get MGT to come and give us a date, that would be very helpful. It'd be a good time, probably, since it's been as long as it has, to just take a fresh look at it. So anyway, that, that's our recommendation is to, I recommend that you keep all the attendance boundaries the same for the next school year and then look at it closely going forward.
Just asking about WT, it has WTI on this sheet. I know it's WTC. And looking at the codes down here at the very bottom, just right above the total, it's got 30 and 31. Those codes reference adult. I'm looking at page three or four.
Oh, yes, in the, in the back.
Yeah, the sheet that gives the list of the fish capacity.
Yes.
Okay, the fish capacity for WTC is 795. It's current enrollment as of, the printout here shows 263, which is at capacity, it's 33% of usage at this point. And I know that when we looked at changing that name, I specifically asked about the accreditation for that name change, and I was told that it's SACS accredited. But looking at SACS accreditation, it's based on high school enrollment. This isn't showing any high school enrollment on this sheet. I just, I'm just trying to understand.
Let me, let's get back.
They're not SACS accredited. They are accredited, it's a national organization.
Well, when we had Ms. Willis here, she specifically asked about that, and she said that they had that accreditation, but it was through the high school groups. So at this point, let me, let me talk to Kelly Tyler about it because he's got that vocational experience, and he'll probably be able to explain it to me as far as the coding. I think it's a coding?
I think some of these are high school students. I'm not, I'm not absolutely certain, but I think 48 high school students and 215 adult students.
Okay, so it must, it's got to be a coding thing.
I know the 31 are adult students.
31's definitely not.
Yeah, the high school students.
So you're thinking coding for 30 is big? Okay.
Definitely a smaller number of high school students.
I'll ask him. Thank you. Thank you.
I can, I can get that information for you as far as.
Thanks. Yeah, I know that it's, it's just, I know I'm getting into the weeds there as far as coding. I just want to make sure I understand it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
And I appreciate this, this document. It's got a great information here, especially to me as a board member, and so, Mr. Dixon, I appreciate your work there. I did want to take note of that at the top of page six on the IMS middle school entrance and the legalization. And am I reading in your report that there's a possibility that once the design, the project design is complete, we could move ahead on the legalization?
Well, I've got some new information about that that I've gotten since this report was written, and what I have found out is that the, according to the project manager for Atkins, which is the consultant for FDOT, the current location of the intersection, Middle School Road and 41 meets the separation requirements for a traffic signal, so it wouldn't have to be relocated. The issue now is you have to have a warrant study that's done that shows the necessity of a traffic signal. You can't just ask for a traffic signal. So basically what I'm, I need to do is I need to find out, you know, whether or not we can, whether we have to wait until we have, you know, when, how, and, you know, how do we do that warrant study? We have done that before. We have had to hire a traffic consultant before to do a warrant study, and it's very difficult if it's not an elementary school to get a traffic block. You have to have a lot of traffic over a prolonged period of time to trigger the warrants that are necessary for a signal, but we're still pursuing them. I think it's just going to be a matter of being able to, to show the need for a traffic signal. But it, my understanding is that that intersection does not have to be redone currently in the, several years ago, we approached the city of Inverness and DOT, and they, DOT told us that the intersection would have to be moved so that the separation would be a quarter of a mile from the traffic signal at the K-mark. But if it doesn't have to be moved, that significantly lowers the cost, so you're just paying for the signal, you're not paying for the relocation. So that's actually in our work plan to, to do that. We just need to be able to get the warrant study to show the need, and we're looking at that now.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion.
I just found that she was, well, you don't have that in the image. That's out of line.
Yeah, 30, 30.
He's wrong. Yeah. He's wrong. We're not showing the high school kids over there. So 30 and 31 are definitely adults.
Yeah. I had a motion earlier.
Yeah, oh, that's okay.
Oh, no, you know what? I apologize. If we can go back and get a motion on it, we've had that, I'd had down on Doug and Ginger before that. If I can have a motion on item C.
I need to approve to be adopted by the City of 2015-16 school year with no changes for elementary, middle, and high school.
And I need a second, and then I'll ask for public. I have a motion by, I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Dodd to approve and readopt the current attendance boundaries for the 2015-2016 school year with no changes for elementary, middle, and high school. Before we vote, I'm going to ask the public if anyone wishing to come forward on the approval of the readoption of the current attendance boundaries for the 2015-2016 school year with no changes for elementary, middle, and high school. Anyone wishing to come forward? Last call. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. And we do have item D still on our time certain, so Ms. Allegrada, if you, I believe you're presenting on that?
Yes.
This is the approval of the 2015-2016 Code of Student Conduct. Thank you.
And this is the final proposal with all the changes on here. This would be the print copy ready to go to Pride for publication on your approval.
And before we move forward, I'm just going to ask for public input. Anybody wishing to come forward to speak on the approval of the 2015-2016 Code of Conduct? Please step forward. Anyone wishing to comment on the approval of the 2015-2016 Code of Student Conduct? Last call. Board members, I'll entertain a motion.
I look to approve the 2015-16 Code of Student Conduct.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Bowe, I'm sorry, a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Bowe for to approve the 2015-2016 Code of Student Conduct. Any questions?
I just have a question about the civil citations. Do they become part of the student's resume, the student's civil citations?
No, ma'am.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the public hearing. I'm going to reopen the regular board meeting where we have a 5:45 time certain, and before I begin, I just need to do my housekeeping of chairman's statements. Each listed speaker will be allowed three minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are asked to address the issue at hand and refrain from using obscenities, vulgarities, and other breaches of respect, and refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of peace. We ask that you model the following characteristic traits: cooperation, responsibility, citizenship, kindness, respect, honesty, self-control, and tolerance. The school board will not discuss or take official action on any presentation. Any person present who wishes to speak, please fill out a green card that is in the back. And I would like to call, first of all, the Save the Crystal River for a presentation. And you can step forward to the microphone right there, whoever would like to speak.
We've got some other representatives from Save the Crystal River that can all come up for us. We're here today to personally thank Sam Himmel for everything she did to help us in our letter-writing campaign to Senator Dean and the Environmental Preservation Committee in Tallahassee this year, requesting the necessary funding for the Save Crystal River Kings Bay Pilot Restoration Project. The Save Crystal River, with Sam's help and support, proudly delivered 21 beautifully decorated boxes filled with nearly 7,000 student, teacher, and parent letters to Tallahassee. We were overwhelmed with pride as we listened to our students from La Canto Middle School and the Academy of Environmental Science read some of their letters at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon at the Governor's Club in Tallahassee. Although we don't know yet if this project will be funded this year from the legislature, your efforts served to enlighten the students of Citrus County about our valuable water resources, and the students also learned the valuable lesson that they can affect change in the Florida legislature. We hope in the future that Save Crystal River will be able to continue a partnership with Citrus County Schools to further educate the students about our unique and very special ecosystem and their role in protecting it. Therefore, it is our honor and our privilege to present Mrs. Sandra Himmel and the Citrus County Schools with our Making a Difference Award for embracing the letter-writing campaign to fund the Kings Bay Pilot Restoration Project. We want to thank Mrs. Himmel and the Citrus County School System for everything. We want to thank Mrs. Hemel and the Citrus County School System for everything that you all do to make Citrus County a wonderful and progressive learning experience for all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you all. And I would just say this about this group. This is one amazing group. I met one afternoon with a couple of ladies and I tell you, within a week, we have boxes everywhere. In Tallahassee, I don't think we're ready for you all. Thank you. What's going to do?
Okay. Thank you all. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you all for doing that. We're going to go ahead and ask Mr. David Davies to come forward.
I'd like to thank the board for their time. I'm a concerned father, resident locally, living on Assassin. My son and my little sister both now attend Lucanto Primary and Lucanto Middle School before I attended Pride at schools. Had an issue last month on the 22nd that kind of disturbed me. I wait for my son's bus stop like I do every day to pick him up in the afternoons, and more than 15 minutes before his bus time, I found my son walking down the road with a mentally disabled child, was discharged off the bus without any parents present at the bus stop, and was left walking home on their own. When I took it up with the school and I took it up with the transportation department, I was kind of put off and was told that it's policy that there is no age requirement, that if a child is first grade and above can be left on the side of the road by the bus driver without a parent present. I personally feel like that is a safety violation against the kids. There's so many safety procedures at the school to cover, to check IDs, to make sure that the kids are getting in the right cars with the right people so that they're not having these issues. To put them out on the side of the road at a bus stop in a neighborhood, I have a list and a picture that I got from the sheriff's office website of all the predators and sexual offenders in the neighborhood. There's more than 32 in a five-mile radius of my son's bus stop. And at least two children that I caught walking down the road were by themselves for a minimum of five minutes with no parents anywhere in sight. Eight children on this bus stop and at least three to four that I know of for a fact were left that day. No parents had made it there. One parent chased the bus down to stop it to retrieve their child. I personally feel like somebody needs to look into this policy and maybe review what a safe age might be for a child. But six years old and above, in my thinking, is not a safe age. And who takes responsibility for that, to drop a child off early in the bus stop? I'm a parent, I'm notified by the school at the beginning of the year to be at the bus stop 10 minutes before the bus time, just as a precaution because the bus could be running early, could be running late. 15 minutes before the bus time, I'm walking up to the end of my road and my son's already in the middle of the road with a mentally disabled child. The mother of the other child was freaking out because apparently if my son wasn't with her son, she don't know where her son would have went. I would just ask that maybe this could be reviewed and looked into a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. And thank you for bringing it to our attention. Mr. Stillwell, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening for the record. My name's Clark Stillwell. I'm returning our reverend Goodfellows, a solid waste collector in Citrus County, and they collect solid waste in Citrus County for you under bid contract. And I'm just briefly going to discuss with you the status of that contract vis a vis Citrus County. And then I want to discuss with you the $27,500 a year you're paying that I think is not properly due. My client was awarded the contract in the summer of last year. They have a separate independent landfill in Sutter County. They requested county permission to haul their waste to that facility. It was delayed. My client delivered an opinion letter that the waste control ordinance of Citrus County was illegal. The county reviewed it in December. They decided that it was. Often you know how orders, they take different views. The county then instituted the penalty phase of their ordinance against my client. We went through a hearing. The county administrator was our judge. It was an interesting hearing. And now we're on appeal. In the interim, there was a decision out in the city of Winter Springs that came out that directly affects the case. The premise of our defense here is twofold. A, that the ordinance is a fact flaw and there is no waste control within Citrus County that's valid. And more succinctly as to you and your contract and the $27,500 that you've paid for the last four years, that the school board is an independent autonomous body and the county has no regulatory authority over the waste stream. Basic facts. You're created by the Florida Constitution. You enjoy homeroom powers. We know that for a fact. Under Florida Statute 1000, three or four sections empowered you to deal with your solid waste and the maintenance of your school as part of your functions. You enjoy sovereign immunity. You know that for a fact. In the city of Key West case, approximately two years ago, the city of Key West sought to impose a drainage assessment against the school board. The appellate court there basically said, look, they have homeroom powers, just like we discussed. They're codified by state statute. And oh, by the way, they have sovereign immunity. And the city of Key West drainage assessment against that school board was defeated. In Winter Springs, what happened, more particularly as to garbage, was they had awarded an exclusive franchise to one contractor. The school board under 286 went out for bid. They gave it to another contractor. That contractor started to take his solid waste out of Winter Springs and contract to the exclusive bid. The city went to the contractor, the school board's contractor, and said, we're going to put you in jail, we're going to fine you, we're going to take your license away. Court there said basically this. Winter Springs, the school board has homeroom powers. It's given. It's codified by statute. The regulatory authority under 125 of the Board of County Commissioners does that.
Excuse me one second, Mr. Stillwell. Would you give him two more minutes if you put on that? That's what I wanted. I wanted to make sure and give you that opportunity.
The regulatory of Citrus County and Ed County under 125 to deal with solid waste goes to individuals. Florida Statute 1, the very first statute, the very first statute says that the school board is not an individual under state statutes, a separate political body. So what they said in Winter Springs is the school board bid was valid, that the contractor could take the waste out, notwithstanding all the authority that the city of Winter Springs asserted, the same authority that Citrus County is asserting in our lawsuit. So I wrote you a letter on 30th March, laid it out. And what we said to you then was you're paying $27,500 a year to Citrus County for what is called under their own ordinance an assessment. Respectfully, I'm telling you, I don't think you should be paying it. And I would ask that you, on behalf of the taxpayers, as fiduciary for your monies, stop. Now, you can do a few things here. You can do nothing. And I don't think that's in your nature or the most responsible thing. Certainly, I want to ask your lawyer for an opinion. But while your lawyer's writing an opinion, I would write a letter to the school board, excuse me, to the county commission and say, we're not going to pay it until you come to, they come to you and justify why you, as an independent political body, are subject to their jurisdiction. Trust me, when you stop paying, they will respond. If you just write a letter, they're going to keep paying, they're going to ignore you.
We're used to that. I'm sorry. That won't take your time, my man.
I didn't want to say it. But that elephant is in the room. You know, we're going to fight our fight. Our fight, in many ways, is your fight. And you can dovetail all our research. As we've gone through this process, I've kept the school board attorney appraised just as a matter of professional courtesy of the litigation case law, sent them all our research. But, you know, they know that I wrote that letter on May 30. We're six weeks later and they're still collecting and they're going to continue to ignore you unless you do something. So that's why we're here. We'd ask you to take some affirmative action. I'm not asking you to sue them, okay? I'm not asking you to spend, in fact, if you make them come to you, they're going to, if you will, they're going to do the research and Mr. Bradshaw, we're going to have to pay him for all that time. That's the cheap way out. So that's my comments. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. We feel good about our position. We feel really good about our position as to the school board. Like I said, we've got the judge on our side in Winter Springs, which can't hurt anybody. So, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Stillwell. We appreciate it, and we do appreciate you sending the information. Please continue to keep contact with Mr. Bradshaw.
Thank you. I look forward to your response, whatever it may be.
And with that, Mr. Hilger, I'm going to go ahead and turn it back over to you. And thank you, Mr. Hilger, for being patient.
Well, good evening. I gave you a little bit earlier, three sheets of paper stapled together. And on the back two sheets of the paper, I will tell you, are pretty much the guidelines of what we try to use as far as tracking students at Citrus High School. Also, I've talked with my colleagues and so forth, too, and we share ideas and strategies that go along with making whatever we can as far as assisting our kids in being successful at school. On the second page, you'll notice it's just one that I made a copy for you of a student that is filled out and how that process has gone through. We'll tell you, the guidance counselors love this part of it because it keeps track with where they are. Our juniors and seniors also have a copy of this form that was shared with me. And we actually got that idea from Crystal River High School, so we want to thank them for that idea and making sure that they have their own copy also. The very back page, though, is just an update of that. And the only reason that that's just changed a little bit because of, you see things down there like Algebra E O C and those things that are added compared to what it was when the first form was done. I'm going to ask you, please, to look at the very first page. I'm not going to specifically read every one of these strategies, but I wanted you to know and to understand that we take each individual student very seriously and we track those students between counselors and so forth. And you can see through the bullet marks and so forth of everything that we try to do with each one of those students. I didn't list athletics there, but athletics, I am adding that to the list now because a lot of coaches will spend time in making sure that their kids will take a weekly sheet or biweekly and making sure in contact with those teachers, too, to see how they're doing. The second part section down there is about our seniors and the strategies that we have in place that we use with our seniors there. And then how this information is distributed. And you can see there, it's done through the homeroom, it's done through the morning show, the dial-out system, curriculum night, open house, on our website, and so forth. So my main objective today is to let you know that we know each of our kids and where each of our kids are and what strategies that we're putting in place to assist them to be successful, so that there is no one that's left between the cracks or whatever the case might be.
Thank you, Mr. Hilger.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, Dr. Connors.
I don't have a handout, but we actually follow a lot of those same processes and procedures. Actually, all three high schools do. But what I really want you to take away from this is that we have multiple systems in place so that our students are going to be successful. I don't want you to think that if a student does not graduate from one of our high schools, that it's because they've fallen through the cracks and we missed something. Because we are not missing anything. They are not falling through the cracks. I mean, it is a partnership. We've talked about it earlier. It's going to, you know, need to be us, the school, the parents, and the student for them to do their part. So we have all kinds of systems in place so that they can meet or exceed graduation requirements. And we pretty much all do the same thing because we do talk to each other. Now, I know Mr. Hilger didn't mention it, but part of what we do is our counselors have that student from ninth grade to graduation, so they really get to know those students. And he might have in there that they meet, we meet individually with students at least twice a year to talk about how they're progressing towards graduation. We also have implemented this year what we call STAR activity, which is a student, teacher, accountability report. And you see that credit check form there. That's what we use and we put that in place. Our students are divided into homerooms and that homeroom teacher stays with those students again from ninth grade all the way to graduation. But part of that, we implemented that so the students would take ownership. So it's not just the guidance counselor keeping track of their credits. It's actually the student going through that activity, whether it's every midterm and grading report, and then actually transfer that information onto this credit check so that they're keeping track of that, too. And parents are informed and the homeroom teachers kind of help us there. And let's say when you started at Crystal River High School, the homeroom STAR program? Well, we did, well, yes, we did that this year. We started it. And part of that was just because we wanted to make sure. We give out a lot of information. I mean, you can see the list, how we communicate. But we wanted to make sure that the students really understood those graduation requirements and, you know, as educators, what better way than getting them involved? It's not just them listening or getting a handout, but actually going through the motion of keeping track also, so there's no question about what it is required, what's required of them for graduation. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you. Good evening. Lucanto High School, like the other two, we do a lot of the same things that they do as well.
I'm sorry, your name for the record?
Snack Mullin. We do a lot of the same things that.
We miss you over here, Mr. Davies, so I'm just giving you a hard time.
And I'm sure I'll get to get on Thursday. Maybe everybody will be a board chairman that night. But we do, we do a lot of the same things that the other two schools do as well, but we've instituted a couple of new things this year. One thing, we've taken advantage of Skyward. Every time a guidance counselor meets with a student, they go in, build a screen, type in what the meeting is and what was discussed in that meeting, whether it was credit checks, whether it was a problem they may have had at home, whatever it is. But we use that tool to help the counselors keep up, you know, with what's going on from day one when they walk in to day whenever they walk out. So we've done that. That's been good for us. We've created that and started that this year. The other thing that we did this year, we started with cohort coming in at 18. We found out this year that in the first semester, we had 123 of our ninth graders that failed at least one class. So in the early part of February, we did a mail out. We wanted to meet with all the parents of those children that had failed a class, set it up. We brought in a large amount of staff to set up different stations that those parents could go around to, what they can be involved in, what the requirements are for graduation. We just covered the entire gamut. But the 123 bad 19s show up. So, and we discussed a lot earlier that, you know, it takes that partnership of the three units. And it's, you know, we're trying to get the buy-in from our parents to get them there. I made the comment two or three weeks ago, our IB meetings are full every Tuesday night once a month. You know, our aim and our hope is to get any of those meetings, the curriculum nights, these meetings that we do once a year, starting this year, for our parents to get those full as well. So, you know, like Mr. Hilger, like Dr. Connors, we make sure that we don't have those kids that fall through the cracks. We track them day one. When they walk in the door, we try to meet with all of our ninth graders at least during that first nine weeks. Our seniors, we try to meet with twice a year, go over their credit check sheet to make sure that they know where they're at and let them know where they stand. And then our guidance counselors do a good job of putting those students where they need to be so that they can be successful. Any questions for me?
I have a question.
I'm sorry. I'm looking at the 20, I'm saying 120 students?
What did you do to follow up on them to make sure their parents...
That they knew, well, the first thing we did, we put that list together, we did our failure list, put that together late December, looked at it early January, realized we had a high number. Sat down as administrative team, like, what is it that we need to look at that we need to do? We then contacted those parents by letter, we mailed it out. We didn't, we sent it home with the kid, and we mailed it out. So, the parents knew, here's what we're doing, here's when we're doing it. Then we did a separate call-out for those hundred and twenty-three, and I may be off a little bit. For all of those, I mean, we made three forms of contact, so those parents knew, you know, we wanted them to understand that their child is possibly at risk now for not graduating. And we wanted to make sure that, you know, somehow, some way, we covered every gimmick we could to contact and communicate with them.
So, only nineteen showed up out of the hundred?
I think that's where it was, nineteen? There wasn't many.
And I'm just, so, the follow-up, so, only nineteen shows, so, how, what's happening with...
But we're still tracking those kids, well, I mean, we're still tracking those kids. That, you know, our concern now is, and we shared this, and I shared it, I think it was Mr. Mullin earlier in the week, our fear now is of those hundred and twenty-three kids, and once we get through with their first year in ninth grade, and looking at the early list that the teachers are handing in, that we're gonna have that many, and quite a few more that are gonna fail at least one or two classes. So, you know what, they're gonna go right on our list, we put in Miss Nobles, and Nancy Haynes came out of the MTSS multi-tier support system, looking at that so that we can meet with those kids individually. We had over forty of our teachers that signed up, every administrator took at least a kid so that we could help track those kids, those ninth graders and others.
That was a combination of ninth through twelfth?
No, that's just ninth graders, no, that's just ninth graders. Failed one class, ninth grader failed at least one class.
Thank you.
Mr. Connors? So, you enter in the Skyward when the guidance counselor meets with the student?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, at the end of four years, you could go in and see every time the guidance counselor...
We will have, starting with this year, we will have a history, those young men and young ladies that entered this fall, we'll be able to look back in 2018, or whatever that spring or summer is, every meeting that took place with that young man or that young lady. So, August of, what did we just leave, fourteen through May of eighteen?
So, if a parent were to come into you and say, hey, nobody's met with my child, you could go right in there and look in there?
Spring or Bay of this there, right? Yes, I would, absolutely. Good tracking tool. All right, let's go.
Ms. Ellergren, I'm just gonna ask the three, or two things, a couple of things first is, first, thank you all for the great success of our students. We are so proud of being able to say how we brag about Washington Post and U.S. News and World Report, and more importantly, just seeing those wonderful faces on graduation day. We know there's a lot that goes into this, so we value what, the three of you, because you are the three that really take the brunt of those graduation requirements, those graduation deadlines, and the troubles of when those kids get certificates of completion. And I know it haunts you all when that happens, so I want to thank you in advance for that. One of the things, though, that I know that we are struggling with is not necessarily something that you all, there's nothing that's been doing wrong, it's been this SB, the Senate Bill Four issue. And that is the graduation requirements with tied to the high-stakes testing. This is about the time of the year we all start getting those phone calls from parents that say, my child has been there for four years, and they've done all that they've been asked, but they can't pass the test. And the challenge is, is in some of those cases, we're finding out that those students were ESE students, and they may no longer be, and it was appropriate that they are no longer. They were being successful in their courses, they were progressing positively. And the idea we've always argued is, why would we wanna keep them into that type of situation? Now, the problem is, we can't get them an exemption on those tests unless they're ESE kids. I know Ms. Haynes, I talked to earlier today, and her, you know, feeling was, you know, we may have to start rethinking our thoughts when it comes to previously telling kids, let's take you out of ESE, let's get rid of that IEP. So, one of the things I would say is, while we still have the legislature mandating these high-stakes testing that may or may not be valid, I think we need to look at that option. That's not gonna help those kids that haven't been identified as ESE yet. But those kids that maybe have in elementary or middle, but we kind of worked them out of that, we may need to be looking at that. So, that's one of the things I would just point attention to. The other one is one, and it's not for today, but it is one I'd just say, what'd you think about? We're, I believe, the only district left in the state, and this is an issue that I still have, that physical education, we require 1.5 credits of health, wellness, and physical fitness. The state only requires it to be one credit. It doesn't sound like a lot, but it does tend to affect how we structure those students. And so, I would say that in some of your principal meetings, and it's with Mr. Mullin in those conversations, maybe that we do look at, do we, is there still a need that we have to keep that extra half-credit? Or is that extra half-credit really just creating a new challenge, or an additional challenge for us? So, it's just something I would lift out to you all on that. Was there anything else, Board members, as I said a minute?
Regina's on the thing.
No, I'm gonna, I was gonna, I just didn't, I was, because I was on that, so, Ms. Regina, please.
No, that's okay, I was really listening to you. And I apologize, I thought this would look a little bit bigger for everybody. But what I wanted to just take a few minutes and share with the board, and I know that you could come up with this, and I know that this is on your mind, but just to remind the board that, from a district level, we do support all the schools, and specifically... This is so good. But this isn't the screen I want. At the district level, we support all the schools, and specifically at the high school, the task that we take very seriously is monitoring the students who withdraw, who drop out of school. About six years ago, we came up with a district-wide process to help us do that. On a monthly basis, Student Services, as well as the high schools and administrators as well, get a monthly report on students who drop out. Could be a withdrawal code of non-attendance, it could be because they dropped out, it could be because they're in DJJ, it could be because they're in DNE, or whereabouts unknown. This was a very instrumental tool in getting us started with monitoring those students and keeping our radar on those students who were dropped out. Unfortunately, as time went on, we realized that this was just a snapshot in time. Once these students came to us on this report, then the next month, they were off that report. So, it was up to us to remember these students, to track them, and to monitor them, to see if we could bring them back into school for those who withdrew. So, what we have developed, and again, I apologize for the smallness of it, but what we developed and rolled out through informational services in February is something called High School Tracking. And what our new resource does for the high schools, as well as at the district level, is a report that would track students for their entire four years based on their cohort group. So, that LaCanto High, Citrus High, Crystal River High, Renaissance, the Academy, have every one of their students listed on this report that comes out monthly, so that a principal and current leadership team can monitor these students if they've dropped out, if they've gone to another school, if they have gone to the alternative program, to make sure they are coded correctly. Because not only is it important that we're monitoring the students to succeed and get the graduation requirements needed to graduate, we need to make sure they're coded correctly and where they're going. Because sometimes, if a coding error is there, we might see a student entered in 2012, his graduation rate is showing up as 2017 instead of 16, so that when we pull those students out, we might be pulling the wrong students. So, as much as coding might not seem important, it is extremely important. We are monitoring those students who go to Renaissance to make sure they're coded correctly. We are monitoring the students who are withdrawing from one school and going to another. Is that school picking them up? We are monitoring students who leave and go to WTC, are they being coded correctly? So, again, our responsibility and our support to the schools is to monitor this. We're monitoring the students, not just on a snapshot, but for their whole cohort group. So, let's say a student dropped out in ninth grade, Linda Connors, and I don't mean to focus on you, but Dr. Connors then can look at this and have that snapshot of all her students in that cohort. Maybe she has heard something about the student, maybe she thinks the student wants to come back to school, so she makes some phone calls and tries to get this student back. Where in the past, this information wasn't at their fingertips. We also have meetings several times a year when we bring a group of people together from the schools, that leadership team, administration, guidance secretary, data people, to ensure that they have that understanding of how the coding happens. So, that's where we supported the district-level coding of these students.
And I want to add that Ms. Ellergren and I meet about once a month, go over all these reports, Mr. Mullin talks to the high school principals. When he gets his reports, he'll call one of the three high school principals and say, tell me about Thomas Kennedy, tell me about Linda Powers. And they know where these students are, and that's how we also track them by this report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hill. And the last report, I just wanted to share with you some information. Knowing that many of our students do transfer to Renaissance and Sirmi, we are still monitoring those students, they are our students. And some of the things that we do at Student Services, I just wanted to bring to your attention. On a weekly basis, we get an enrollment history of all the students that are currently there or who have enrolled in that period, just that one week period. What that enables our department to do is to ensure that students who are there are getting the academic needs that they're supposed to receive and the counseling. For example, if a student has a Bible core, or if a student is an ESE student, we wanna make sure that services on their IEP can be met at Renaissance. If they're set there for behavior concerns, some of the counseling, whether it be anger management, social skills, peer pressure, substance abuse, bullying issues. Renaissance has counseling services for those individual needs. And one of my responsibilities is to ensure that those students who enroll there are given that counseling, so we follow up on that. Something else we get on a weekly basis is also withdrawal of students. And again, it's that monitoring of the students to make sure if they moved, they're coded correctly, if they are moving to another district, they're coded correctly, if they're withdrawn from Homay, that this parent has come in and registered that student, and didn't just say they were going to Homay. If they decide to go to WTC, whether the GBD program or any other instructional services, we need to make sure not only that they're coded correctly, but that they followed up and went to WTC.
Can we ask, with the Renaissance Sirmi placement, those students that have an IEP where the services can't be provided out at Sirmi, is there a waiver that the parents sign, or what do we do with those students that qualify because of behavior concerns?
If there's an ESE student that the school wants to place in Renaissance to change their behaviors, the process in place is the sending school calls over at Renaissance, and they have a conversation. They have the IEP, they go over, they talk about it. Renaissance looks at the needs, sees that they can meet those instructional needs. If they cannot meet those needs, then the student does not go over to Renaissance.
But there could also be an option for that student to request their... Nancy Haynes and I are working, we're having a conversation with the board about increasing the availability of slots at that.
Between the Academy of Environmental Science, or they track with their home schools? Is that how we keep up with them?
I might could answer you yes to that, it's just a quick answer, but Mr. Scott?
Academy of Environmental Science, the students that attend there are actually visible to the high schools. We talked about that years ago. And so, when they actually go in, they can monitor those students when they're at ADS and be able to continue to monitor their track.
And that communication is working out better now?
It's all about the processes in place and following through with them. Another piece of information that we look at every week with the enrollment and withdrawal is students who are placed with a 45 or 90-day program. So, our responsibility is to the services to make sure the parents did go over there, they did make that phone call, they did go and register and spend that hour of intake, if you will. We monitor that, because if that has been a board decision, we wanna make sure that parent goes in and enrolls. Also, our DJJ students, students who are leaving a facility and reentering, if their last place or if their last zone school was Renaissance, part of District Student Service's responsibility is to make sure they go into Renaissance, or LaCanto High, or Crystal River High. Again, we're monitoring those students just like we do at other schools. The transition of students, whether going into Renaissance or back to their zone schools. We get a list of those students who are transitioning back to ensure that the zone school has been given the information, they know where they are academically, they know some of the behavior modifications that have worked for them, some parents are aware of it, they know to go back to their zone school and re-enroll them. It's just all the processes, you don't wanna lose kids because, okay, we're done over here, we follow through to make sure they go where they're supposed to go, and they're getting the services that they need.
When you do have a code of W22, which is whereabouts unknown, what is the process? Is that when we turn it over to...
Code of W22, it's not something that is just coded because we don't know what else to code. The attendance assistant, social worker, works very closely with the school to look for that student. If we coded a W22 statute says, we have to have exhausted every possible means to try to look for that student. And I could spend several minutes telling you what we do, but just know that, and then that student, once they're a W22, goes into the missing child bank. And we get reports on that every month to see if those children maybe re-entered our district, or maybe one of our students who were a W22 have entered another district. So, again, our department oversees that as well. And then, just real quickly, just to let the board know, again, Renaissance students, as any other students, on a weekly basis, we monitor their attendance. We provide support through our social worker and our attendance assistant. We monitor their discipline, from school, my department, just like the other schools, the arrest, the child abuse reports, Baker Acts, et cetera, et cetera, we monitor that as well. So, I just wanted the board to know that we are monitoring the students at Sirmi just as we monitor all the other students. Thank you.
Thank you. That working out is starting, the social workers taking some of that attendance responsibility? I know that we reduced the number of attendance officers, and the social workers are picking up that weight, so to speak? Are they okay as far as balancing the workload of attendance officer and social workers?
We're calling our daddy to look at that, to ensure that we're not shortchanging anybody with the services. But it's been a learning curve for everybody, learning some different roles and some different specifics to statutes. But what I'll share with you, Ms. Val, is we monitor weekly attendance, like Ms. Hill said, on a weekly basis. We do daily attendance. And I just looked at the figures maybe two weeks ago, last year to this year, we're pretty much flat-lined. We have not seen an effect with more attendance, having that lower number of attendance assistance. So, we don't think we're shortchanging our schools in providing services to them at this particular point.
Thank you.
We thought it'd be a good time of the year to bring this information to you, with graduations coming up, and there's always seems to be an emphasis on the 25 or 30 that didn't graduate instead of the 400 that did at this school. So, we want you to know that, you know, there are kids on that list again this year that didn't make it in four years. We have a plan, we're working with those kids. There are processes in place for them all to be successful. But it does take us, a parent and a student. We can't do it alone.
I really appreciate it. The timing of it is perfect, because like you said, there's always that focus on what we didn't get accomplished. Thank you.
I want to thank the principals for being here. I just want to kind of, after Mr. Kennedy brought up the fact about the 1.5, the half a credit, half a credit, half a credit. When, this happened about four or five years ago, when the state came out with the HOPE course. And basically, it was an intent to strengthen the health education in our schools. Well, it actually came out as the physical education and the personal fitness. So, in Citrus County, we basically maintained that health, physical education, and personal fitness requirement. So, as a board, I need some direction from you, because as we're coming into that student progression plan, and that's coming up for next year, that is a requirement above and beyond, as well as world geography. And as you know, if you've been on the board for some time, world geography is another requirement that Citrus County adds to our students. In our student progression plan, through our conversations every year, we basically have kind of scaled that back, and basically said, a continuously enrolled student will be required to satisfy those... a continuously enrolled student will be required to satisfy those courses. But for those students that transfer in and they have the HOPE credit already done, we're not going to say, okay, you have to add one more half credit. So I just bring that up as far as, again, if you want to workshop that, discuss that, if that's something that we need direction on, please, we just, we understand, again, the opportunities that our students have and then also that added, a lot of things have changed at the high school level, so I just kind of share that.
Ms. Bryant, you look like it. And my thing too, is I really think the principals, I'm interested in how they feel, not tonight, and I'm not saying it tonight, but I think that you all, that's a conversation you all can have with Mr. Mullin too, and that gets shared to us to know. Because what I see right now is, again, the idea that we have enough challenges with certain students of getting the credits needed to graduate. I don't want us to be in the way of that. I think more kids, I don't, I'm not sure that what we're doing, while it seems like we're doing the right thing, my question is only, are we creating an obstacle for us that we just don't need to have be there? Same thing with the social studies. I think, you know, it needs to be something, if the principals say, listen, we're able to do this, this way, we're accomplishing it, that's fine. But I definitely don't, I just don't believe we need to be in the way of a problem. And I'm just afraid at this point, when we have a higher standard than what the state is and the state's standard for graduation requirements is pretty darn high in our state, I just am saying, maybe we need to, you know, look at that. So I think workshopping it is a great idea, but I do, my only thing is, I know you guys are trying to make plans, so I'm not sure that it's not a recommendation that you all somewhat bring forward to us and then present it in a workshop of what that is. But I just, I think we're interested in what you all think of it, at least that, you know.
I guess I need to see, is it a problem? I don't under, is it a problem? So that would be the big question that I have with that.
One of those added requirements.
Right, is it a problem for scheduling at the high school?
Yeah, and I think that's the thing of the other. We know that the state has even said that one of the challenges, and Mr. Clutter and I know, we've had this conversation, you know, we have exemptions for, you know, ROTC for students, we have exemptions if you're in band, but none of our competition sports have any exemptions tied to it. And if they do take the health and wellness course, they're not even allowed to take the exemption. So, and we've talked about that. The question is, when we say there isn't a problem, we don't know how many students could this could be saving as a result of that. So that's where the complexity of this, you know, gets in. So that's why I say, I think it's the principals that you all can address that and then get with us.
Thank you.
Ms. Himmel, yeah, I'm done, you know, go ahead.
Ms. Valph brought up a while ago about WT's accreditation. SACS accreditation now is for state colleges, okay? WTC's accreditation for high school is called Advanced Ed, they changed that, okay? So high school students may not be showing up on our enrollment forms because there's a little glitch in Skyward with K-12 to WTC. So some of those students may be showing up at the high school, all right? And a lot of these accreditation is so that our high school students can transfer those courses to the state colleges.
So we have high school students that are.
Okay, go ahead, what are you going to fix that I just?
Good evening, Ms. Gill.
All of it is under Advanced Ed, but the piece that goes with WTC is called the Council of Occupational Education, COE. So they take care of the technical schools, technical colleges or whatever else.
The COE is the accreditation process for technical schools.
Right, but it's all under the Advanced Ed hierarchy umbrella, if you will.
Well, I just reflected back to what I.
Right, SACS is under that as well.
SACS is under that.
Yeah. So that's more for the colleges and the high schools, whereas the COE takes care of more the technical pieces of it.
Long story short, we have some high school students over there.
Yes, and a 30, 31, I'll address that while I'm up here. Those are adult students, the difference between a 30 and a 31. A 30 is a student who has not, that is an adult, but has not completed their high school diploma. So that could be the GED students over at WTC. And then a 31 is a student who has graduated and is now working toward a post-secondary program, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Gill. No, I do that. Excellent. And I know Mr. Mullin's saying goodbye to his principals, but thank you, Mr. Mullin, for bringing them forward. And Mr. Clutter, thank you, you're here, I can thank you. Approve minutes, I need a motion. Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers to approve the minutes. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye, motion carries five zero. Attorney legal matters, we're going to take up item A, and I'm just going to distribute it out to you all. And do you, you have it, Mr. Bradshaw?
What is it, the easement?
The easement, okay. And did you need to present this, Mr. Dixon, just so that we had it again?
I can just explain what it is, we need an explanation.
Mr. Bradshaw, I'm sorry, Mr. Bradshaw, did you have anything to add yet?
I would, yes, I do.
Okay, thanks.
This matter is so that we can provide electrical service to the new wastewater treatment plant at Floral City Elementary. It got left off the agenda. We only had the easement when it first came in and we did a survey to make sure we knew exactly where it was to attach to the packet, and it just didn't make the agenda. But I understand there's some concerns about the language. And if you could, just approve it with Mr. Bradshaw's approval, then we could get it rolling so that we could flush the toilet on July 1 or whenever. And I'm standing in the way of progress.
Mr. Bradshaw, why don't you go ahead then and chime in and tell us what you need us to modify?
I don't know if you can, I mean, I need to add, I think you talked to attorney, then more language. I need to add some Jessica Luxanack language, I need some identification language in there. I need to tweak some of the Washington, I apologize for that until today.
You want us to approve it, but you're adding more to it?
Yes, you can approve, I guess, haven't we did that before, you approved the easement agreement, as long as I approve what was contained in it.
That'll work?
I have to move to approve. The authorization, I don't mind doing. Floral City wastewater treatment plant, would you hear any? With? With? Anything that he wants to modify, any modification of the one? Yes. That'll work.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers to authorize execution of easement in favor of Duke Energy Florida to install, operate and maintain electrical service to the Floral City Waste Treatment Plant pursuant to additional language and modifications approved by our attorney. Questions? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. And just let me know what I need to submit.
Thank you very much. The only other thing that's in relation to what we talked about is I am aware of the, I'm monitoring the case, one of the cases that I've talked about, I'll just wait and see how that turns out on appeal before I would advise that we would be able to, I have some research on commercial disposal fees and I'm just trying to advise you on my opinion on that, and we should proceed with that. He asked, he did keep me up with the, I would be revising, trying to give some advice. It's more confident in what my opinion on the case is.
So Mr. Bradshaw, there is a case that's still on appeal, so that there, it's still working through the courts, it's not a complete.
There's two or three issues that we're still discussing, but there is a case that's on appeal in regards to whether a school or district has to abide by a city's franchise, exclusive franchise agreement. And so we, we, the DCA, which is our, which is our federal circuit, like recently just got an appeal, a merger remediation. So I don't know if we're going to, if we're not, but it's settled, but there's no sense in us dedicating the effort to the remediation, so as soon as that happens.
When is, when do we pay that fee quarterly?
That's different.
Oh, okay.
Because that is where we have to use the cities' force of franchise holler to haul the trash out of our students located within the municipal. The other issue that we discussed is the commercial disposal fee that we pay on a quarterly basis.
You're talking about 27,000?
Yes, it's paid quarterly.
So the 27,500, which we've been paying over the last four years, is a quarterly fee?
We don't pay 27,500 quarterly. No.
Well, that's why I need clarification.
That's annual, it's paid quarterly.
So it's a total of annually of 27,500, that's the number that he stated.
I don't know. Yeah, I have to go ahead.
It's okay.
It's not, it's not, annually, it's in the $25,000 range.
Annually, he said it's 27,500, I just want to make sure that that's.
No, ma'am, that's an annual fee, paid on a quarterly basis. So there's two things, like Mr. Bradshaw said, there's the assessment, solid waste assessment that the county assesses on us, and there's a franchise agreement within the city that we have to abide by.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Bradshaw, so just to recap your comments, we, your legal advice is to wait until the DCA makes a ruling, is that?
On one of the, okay. The Seminole County School Board did out their garbage that was being controlled by the City of Winter Springs Municipal Franchise Agreement. They said you can only use this hall. So they got involved in a lawsuit. And the circuit court there said that the school board does not have to abide by that exclusive franchise agreement for their schools located inside the City of Winter Springs. Now that is a law of peace, which would be the same issue we would have with the City of Inverness and the City of Crystal. So because it's the exact same issue, and since it's up on appeal and we're in the Fifth Circuit, my advice would be to wait and see what the Fifth DCA does. If they come back and say, we do not have to abide by the franchise agreement, then we can take a position, is what we're going to do with the city. So if they come back and say, we do have to abide by that franchise agreement, then we go to our position.
So then?
We're waiting on that issue.
Okay. And is it on the docket, we heard by the DCA, do you know?
I'm not quite sure if they've got oral arguments set. Mr. Stillwell told me that they were set for mediation. So they mediated a valid court cases now too. So I don't know if they will resolve it. If they resolve it, then they will draw the appeal and enter to a mediating settlement agreement. If they don't resolve it, then it will go up and the Fifth DCA will either write an opinion or DCA will deny it or something like that. But it'll give us a better idea on what to do. Could it give us a better idea on how we handle the exclusive franchise agreements within the municipal here in the city?
Okay, and this is, this is probably not, this is not related directly, but it's interrelated. Are there any legal issues, if you could just explain legal issues to me, of the recycling bins with the county and the city and the issues? Because we're in that, because there's recycling bins at WTC or on our property. Are there any league out, are there any?
I don't think so. I think that the recycling bins, we just place them there as convenience, as a courtesy. We could actually tell them to remove them, we're under no obligation. It was just a convenient location for people to.
They belong to the county, but they're on city property.
Right, they belong to the county, they're on our property.
Correct.
And the county, if the county doesn't move them, we're not looking to move them. I mean, there's no legal issues that would force us to take action.
None that I haven't made aware of.
And maybe a follow-up too, is if we wanted to keep recycling bins there, we could have the authority under Home Rule to place them there. So.
If those particular bins belong to the county, you're right, we could put recycle bins there.
If we wanted to still have a recycling program there.
It's the same, it's the same as it is right now, we grant the county permission to leave them there. They had to remove them, we wouldn't grant, but we're something that's, because I don't believe that is. Well, that may be a different issue, because the county's in charge of recycling. We may have to get back to some other issues.
Well, we brought them ourselves.
As you see, there's nothing clean with trash.
If you had been allowed to get your truck three or four years ago, none of this would be happening right now. The, the question though, then, that goes back to then, of course, the county, this, the county franchise fee though, is also intertwined with this same negotiating settlement. Would it not be? It is not, that's part of the.
That is something different. I'd say two or three different issues. One is the exclusivity of a franchise agreement, whether you have to use that particular holler. Another issue is whether you have to pay commercial disposal fees. And then the third issue, which they're involved in, is the county ordinance of whether the county can enforce the ordinance against our vendor, which I, I won't get into my, into opinions on that, we have stayed out of that with the county and then to find out, find out whether they should have to comply with that ordinance. It's a flow control ordinance, it says you have to keep your trash inside the county, and they say they don't.
So at some point though, we're going to be getting another bill for the quarterly payment on that, roughly $25,000.
I will talk to Mr. Blocker about that tomorrow. We'll, I'll be over here in the morning, and we'll discuss it. I just wanted to kind of clarify a couple of things on that, and outside of that, I don't have anything.
Well, hold right there, because I've got two, two quick items I may need you and Mr. Dixon to update us on. The first one being concurrency, because when we last met, we said, we authorized you send a letter, which you did.
I did, and it's my understanding that it was going back in front of the county commission. I'm not quite sure when it was. I don't think we received a letter from the Board of County Commissioners actually terminating the interlocal agreement, or I have not seen one.
Mr. Dixon, can you, because I think we, I think we have received that.
We have?
Yeah.
I think we got the first one, or I got, we did get one.
Well, I know we got the first one, which said that they wanted to modify.
I think they emailed the second.
Okay.
So.
I'll check.
I think so, I mean, I can verify we got the second one.
If, if, because that was going to be the next situation is, it was my understanding that we, we did receive notice of the second one.
Okay.
Or that, I said the second one, the one, the, a, a now, after they have taken action. So following our letter, the county did take action and terminated on a vote, I believe, of three to two to terminate that agreement. So the question now is, is I'm assuming that the interlocal agreement is, will expire, and then there will need to be one to have a new interlocal agreement started.
It's my understanding that they're required to have an interlocal agreement. It doesn't have to include concurrency, but it does have to include some other things that are listed in the statute.
And so what I am asking this board is, do we want to give our attorney direction with Mr. Dixon's help, that as they start, this county starts preparing an interlocal agreement? Mr. Bradshaw has been authorized by us to be proactive in preparing a counter to that that includes the items we continue to, to ask. Because here comes the issue, they can offer us whatever agreement they want, it doesn't mean we're going to accept it either.
Right, and I think the city is.
City, at least Inverness has chimed in and, and so that was going to be my next question is, how do you feel about asking Mr. Bradshaw to send a formal letter to the cities, asking them to express their support of school concurrency? I know Inverness has indicated that, but if we could get that, that's certainly something that would allow us to, when we sit down, say, we've already got the cities agreeing with this county. So any direction? Thoughts? The reason this is coming up is, I'm sure some of you saw the article on the impact fee collections. And, and Mr. Dixon, if you'd stay there for a second, because it also talks about that there was, I believe, roughly $600,000 right now not collected in impact fees. So I guess my question first, Mr. Dixon, is, is there any monies that also haven't been, that have been returned or that we've had removed from, from our impact? been, that have been returned, or that we've had removed from, from our impact fee collections? That the, that the county has?
Well, we do receive a monthly report of the total that's in the trust fund for impact fees for schools, and there was a negative number, and when I inquired about that, they told me that there were some permits that were issued, where the projects weren't finished, so they basically canceled out the permits and reissued permits and refunded the fees. So, there was some refunds.
I, I think your question is, have we ever had to return money back that wasn't spent in the timeline, is that what you're asking?
No, it was just that, my question, I'm sorry, Mr. Mullen, my question was, is, did, we had monies that were in there, and...
We've never had to return.
And have we, have they, has there been any monies returned or refunded from our account? 'Cause this was, I think, the first time that's happened to us.
It's been refunded from other accounts as well, not just schools.
But I mean, from our school accounts, is this the first time where that's, that we're aware of?
I'm not aware of any refunds previously to that. I, I get that report every month, and I've never noticed it going down, it always goes up.
The concern is, is if this was the county's effort to, to provide a discounted amount of impact fees to stimulate customers purchasing homes, these were homes that were already purchased, and they were under construction. So, that seems to be going a little farther.
Really? There's reclassifying, say, well, I know you haven't finished, we'll just start all of them here.
There were, like, a half dozen of them that were...
The, Ms. Balfour asks, is that verified?
Well, I just am trying to understand, so those were permits that were already pulled before the impact fee was eliminated?
Right.
The construction was already in place, and then, the clarification that...
The CO, the certificate of occupancy wasn't issued, so they, they canceled their first permits and just reapplied, so they, they didn't have to pay the impact fees.
Right. That seems...
Well, I mean...
So, that's, that is what's happening?
It did happen.
Has happened, okay.
Well, there were a few that were, that were already underway.
That already had...
That already had...
The building permit pulled.
Permits pulled, and they were actually from 2014, but it typically takes a year to build a house, you know, or, or thereabouts, so...
Right, but it's not based, it's based on when the permit's pulled, not when the CO is...
Right, well, but then they had the mortuary, and it went effect March 1, so any, any projects that were underway, I mean, the biggest one that I know of, that was, I don't know if it was school, like, it was that big apartment building, whoever kills, I mean, that was underway, and I understand that, it was a...
But that I thought was exempt, 'cause of the...
That is exempt from school.
That was exempt from, from school.
Yeah, but it just comes back to when those impact fees are statuteually required to be paid, it, it's, the obligation comes when the permit's pulled, is from what I'm understanding, as far as the building process and impact fee collection, but it's...
Yeah, there are some, that's a gray area, but that is true, but it should be for a single-family home, for larger projects, they typically give you more time to pay those at the CO, but for residential, single-family homes, that's true, it's usually paid when the permit's pulled.
And my concern, obviously, is that, you know, I understand people who do business and, and do that, but it was the county who are the custodians of the impact fees, and so it would be then their discretion, or their policies, that would govern, I'm assuming, who would get a refund, or have, and have a reissue of a permit. It has nothing to do with even the builders, doesn't have to do with the homeowners, they can ask for it, but that doesn't mean that they would be permitted to do it unless, I'm assuming, the county then would have to be allowing that permitting, that, that process to take place. Would that be correct?
It would probably be an administrative process, and I'm not, I haven't looked at the administrative procedures, but it would probably be something that would be an administrative procedure, if there was a refund issued. And I know they've talked about, you know, how to issue refunds, that there were some cases where parks weren't used, park monies weren't used in seven years, so there was some talk about refunding park impact fees. So, that's in their AR, so I guess this would probably fall under that as well, but I haven't looked at it.
Okay. Mr. Bradshaw, is there anything on that, that we, I mean, I don't know that we have any recourse, because we have no...
That's the first I've heard, and I, I don't know. To be honest with you, I can...
I think, I think we're, we seem all a little perplexed by it, so, thank you.
This will be followed up by the...
Yeah, Mr. Dixon, if you could follow up with the board on that, and maybe, and maybe provide the board an update on that in a, in a future day.
You're talking this whole time, I didn't look at it.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Clotter, do you have anything?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blocker? Mr. Mullen?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mullen, for bringing them forward again, the principals. Mr. Dodd, it's a pleasure having you here tonight.
Well, thank you. It's exciting, I think, to see all of the end-of-year celebrations and all the student accomplishments, all the hard work that's gone into the year, and I've had a chance to get out there and be a part of a lot of those, and of course, the staff appreciation, too. Last week, show our appreciation to our police, that's a big part of this, 'cause, as we all know, they're a, a big part of the mix, so I just wanna say it's exciting for me, as a new school, school board member, I'm gonna be sitting on some football fields here next week, I guess, and, but that's what it's all about, like Ms. Bryant said, you know, getting these students through and getting them to graduate from my school, and I got the experience, one of my daughters graduated from college this last week, and so that was exciting for me, also, she graduated from Citrus High in 2011, and happy to see her get through her bachelor's degree. I also just wanna say kudos to Citrus High and the baseball program, we're excited about what, what they're doing there, and hopefully they'll fare well in state tournament, the final four, and at Fort Myers, and maybe play for our first-ever state championship at Citrus High School, hopefully that, that happens.
1920, I think it's...
They made it to finals, but they didn't win, I was...
Right, but they were playing.
Right, they were playing.
What about the cheerleading?
(laughing). That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Ms. Bryant? Ms. Balfour?
I just wanted to thank all of the elementary schools doing their kindergarten roundup. It's, it's so much fun to walk into any elementary school, and kudos to La Canto Primary School, they had such a creative way of enticing kindergartners to get excited about learning, and every single item in here, including the deck of cards and the dice, all have worksheets and little step-by-step ways of utilizing each one of these things, and the, the aha for me, after attending that La Canto Primary School kindergarten roundup, I attended the Take Stock in Children, and there was a kindergarten wannabe, sitting there with her little bag, and going through and looking at the worksheets that were part of it, and she was practicing her writing in the writing packet. I was just so impressed with how the instant gratification of the efforts of those kindergarten teachers that took the time to put together such a well-developed packet, that actually gives the parents the I can sheet, so that the parents know exactly what their kids need to be prepared to be able to do when they walk in the door, so they'll be successful. So, those parents out there that have not registered their kindergartners, jump in there and get that one done. Also, I wanted to thank, again, those art teachers that are out there, a lot of those pictures were brought to you by Sherry DeCesar at Citrus Springs Elementary School, as well as many of the high school teachers and their art departments. So, with that said, it's been a very busy year, looking forward to next year, next week, and celebrating the successes. So, I am ready to pass it.
We went to a couple of the award ceremonies last week, and then this, this week on Thursday, we have La Canto High School, and when I, when I was sitting there listening, I thought, you know what, this district is on top, this district does so many things, it's almost mind-boggling to know how everything falls in place, how all topics seem to be covered, if there's a problem, someone comes in to try to find a solution in a minute or two, not a year from now, and I was amazed, 'cause I have a renewed appreciation of the administration in this building, of our superintendent, our school board members, of our teachers, support staff, everyone involved in helping the students, certainly appreciate the students. I mean, you do, Mr. Clotter, always does a fantastic job, always, and, and all of you do such good work, and bring about such positive results, and I, I'm impressed, y'all are good. So, I appreciate it, too.
Thank you. I am passing out a letter, draft letter, if you would look at, and take a minute here, if you would. I wanna first thank some people on this, because this was by no means a single effort. I wanna thank in particular first, Ms. Simon, Ms. Crowe, and also Ms. Jordan, who, who helped Duke some wordsmithing, Mr. Bradshaw, who made sure Legal had had a look at this, I even sent it to our former colleague, Ms. Deutschman, and said, okay, this is, this is what they're sending us, what do you think? So, I, I appreciate it, and I appreciate that Legal had a chance to look at it, and Educational Services Research and Accountability, so that we know kind of what we're looking for, because we're not trying to recreate the wheel, but we do have some issues, and Mr. Simon, I'll just, if you have anything that you wanna add to this, feel free to step forward, but the meat of this really comes down to the, we therefore are employing you, the governor, to use the authority of your office to immediately sign and execute an order. That would suspend the use of these assessments for students' grades, the use of these assessments for course requirements, the use of these assessments for graduation requirements, the use of these assessments for any performance pay requirements for teachers and administrators, and the school accountability, school grade for the 2014, 2015 school year. Oh, I thought you were gonna say, that's added. Here, here. So, board members, if, if we can, I would just need a motion to accept the letter, and then, on your way out, we would then just sign the letter, and we will have it sent to the governor, with CCing to the parties listed.
I make a motion to accept the letter to Governor Scott, on behalf of the school board, requesting the specifics as outlined within the context of the letter.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to accept the letter as presented by, to Governor Scott. Any discussion or comments?
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, it's a collective effort. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero, and Ms. Linda will have a clean copy for us to put our signatures on on the way up. Ms. Linda?
It just brought to my attention that when the letter came, it has Ms. Deutschman's name on the top right, so I will have y'all sign the back letter that Mr. Kenny drafted, and then I will just revise the front page to reflect the dog dog.
Yeah, how'd that happen?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Dodd.
You know what, when Ms. Deutschman looked at it, she snuck it in there.
Why the hell?
No.
That would have been horrible.
Ms. Howell, do you have anything? Okay. If there's no objection, then we adjourn. We're adjourned, thank you.